Good evening and welcome to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for September 10th, 2018. Few business orders. If you plan on speaking tonight, please approach the podium and state your name and address and sign in. At this time, if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off to interfere with petitioners and citizens speaking on petitions. That being said, moving forward under continued business. ZB 2018-21 for a variance, Megan House Foundation at 268 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Barnum Street, Section 6.1.10. The applicant is seeking site plan review, special permit and variance approval at 268 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Barnum Street. The proposal is to redevelop the site to construct an approximately 22,000 square foot industrial and retail building with the associated parking. The proposal project is located in light industry manufacturing storage, LI zoning district and requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4 and special permit approval under Section 12.4 subsection A for retail use in the LI district. For the planning board, invariance is approval from the zoning board under Section 6.1.10 for parking setbacks from lot lines and minimum access drive with another relief that is required of Lowell zoning ordinance. For a matter of public record, Mr. Mark Bier will be the alternate member voting this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. George Theodore, 133 Market Street, representing the applicant. I had handed out tonight, and I apologize to the chairman, that we got these plans to you tonight. I was uncertain whether or not they were filed electronically with the planning department, but nevertheless, I wanted to make sure you had the plan in front of you as well as some of the proposed renderings that we have. That plan that you have is an approved site plan that was approved before a public hearing last Thursday, December 6th. And let me give you a bit of a history behind this in which this goes back with my client, the Megan Foundation. It goes back about a year and a half when they were the successful applicants chosen by the city of Lowell along with Broadway Street Holdings to purchase this property from the city. This property is currently owned by the city of Lowell, so it's a kind of a unique development in that regard in that the city of Lowell still owns it. They have not exercised the land disposition agreement with the city yet, but that is in the works still to do where both parties will be purchasing the property from the city. The front parcel, which we'll call the Muldoon Parcel on Broadway, will be developed by Broadway Street Holdings and the back parcel, we'll call that the Friend Lumber Parcel, will be developed by the Megan Foundation, and that is what is before you tonight. This property, in fact, goes back even further to the acre revitalization plan that was put in place by the city in 1999 in which this parcel was targeted for acquisition by the city for redevelopment. Then eventually, the parcel was purchased, this specific parcel that we have, was purchased by the city through a friendly taking. It was the Friend Lumber Site and then it became the Soucy Ironworks Site. So this was purchased in 2006 from Will Soucy's company, and the city was looking for a mechanism to develop this property, and they came forward in this and an RFP that they put forward about almost a year and a half ago in which the front parcel was going to be combined with a parcel that was privately owned by Broadway Street Holdings and 268 Mount Vernon Street and the rear parcel. Now, the parcel that is before you tonight, which was approved, a site plan was approved before the planning board last week. What will be done with that parcel, we'll back up a second. What was required for this in order to set this in motion was a zoning change had to be done, and that zoning change was done and passed through the city of Lowell about two months ago in which our parcel was rezoned from UMU to light industrial so that we could set forth the uses that we have in the proposed development. And with this process right here that the Megan Foundation is going to move into this property, and what we propose is to build an approximately 22,000 square foot building and which one half is going to be used by the Owl Stamp Company, which they're going to relocate their business to this property, and the Owl Stamp has been in business since 1912 in the city and will continue to do business in the city, and the other side of the building will be used by the Megan Foundation. And the Megan Foundation has established a footprint in the city of Lowell to combat substance abuse and alcohol abuse, and this portion of the property is going to be used by the Megan Foundation to retrain individuals who are successful through the program and treatment, to give them jobs, to retrain them, to give them a place back in the workforce. So with that, what we propose over here is, as I said, we went through site plan review with the planning board, and we are seeking variances for the parking setbacks. The parking setbacks that we have here are three feet. We're looking, what is required under the ordinance is five feet from the lot line. We're also looking for the variance for the access drive into the property. The access drive that we have, that we can produce on this plan is 10 feet, and the minimum requirement is 12 feet. And also, there's a further variance that we have is for the minimum lot opening where the curb cut opening abuts the UMU district, so because of that, as the planning department indicated, we have to use the more restrictive curb cut. So where we, the proposed curb cut, we require a variance there of seven feet. Now, we went through quite a few of the questions before, and let me just go forward on some of these right now that talk about questions that we had before with respect to the loading bay. Our loading bay conforms, our loading bay, the statement said it appears to be eight feet. Well, it's actually 22 feet wide, so it conforms in that regard. The loading bay does conform with the height. It's not placed on this plan, but with the grading that is over there in that area, it will comply with the height. This loading bay is going to be used as a normal loading bay would be, there's not going to be any 24-hour or night delivery, the buildings, the businesses are going to be open from nine to five, and that's the access, that's the delivery access that they're going to have through those time periods. So even though it abuts a residential zone on one side, we're not going to be doing any night delivery, so we don't, as we explained in the site plan review, that, so that would not create a necessity for us to enclose it. As far as the screening requirements that we had proposed that were in here about what we're going to do with screening, again, that will be in the hands of DPD. And also, the abutters, you know, do we want to put a fence? What type of fence? We'll decide that with the city and the abutters. Do we want to put screening of plantings there? Again, that will be decided with the abutters. The one thing that remains in the future here is the site plan has to be approved by the land court, and that is in process. We're able to go forward on this, and this lot here that we have, which is the proposed lot two, is 54,000 square feet, and the front parcel, which will be proposed lot one, will be approximately 41,000 square feet. We did have the calculations and the drawings delivered to DPD with respect to the fire department's access and the turn radiuses that we've done, and the planning department, planning board required us or made adopted recommendations from the city's urban planning department, which made it conditioned on landscaping plan approved with DPD, the lighting plan approved with DPD, and that the A&R plan will be approved by the land court. One other element over here that comes into this is what we would need approval through is the, this property is in the acre neighborhood historic district as well. So because of that, the design review, landscaping, lighting, all has to be approved through the historic board as well. However, this is an important project for my clients to reestablish their businesses and remain in Lowell. This is also an important project for the city of Lowell to go forward on this, to obtain the approvals which will allow the city to sell these properties, which both are being sold for $310,000, and put these properties back to work and on the tax rolls, put these people to work, and we believe for all those reasons that it does not derogate the intent of the zoning ordinance, that we believe it's in harmony with the neighborhood, and we believe that if it was denied, it would render a substantial hardship both to the applicant and to the city. So we ask that you act favorably on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. That being said, I want to open it up to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Sumis, 62 Woolly Street. I also own the parcel, the property at 1 Barnum Street, which is the only house on the Dillon Street adjacent to the project we're talking about. I've lived in this area all my life. I know the Friend Lumber, the Muldoon area. In the last 12 years, it's really gone down, and it's at a point where we have some developers that want to upgrade the property and get it to where it belongs. We have a beautiful stock loss of school there, and this building would definitely be good for the neighborhood, the city, everything. So I'm hoping that the board can approve this and get everything fine tuned to the point where we've had a 20-year acre revitalization plan. This will be a big step in getting it forward and keeping it going, and like I said, I'm hoping the board can approve this for the city, for the neighborhood, the school, everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Good evening.
Hi. I'm Brenda Gould. I'm not a resident of Lowell, but I run Habitat for Humanity of Greater Lowell. We've been doing, building houses in that particular neighborhood that they're speaking about for almost eight years now. It would be great to have a productive project in that area to help us revitalize the neighborhood as well secretly. I wished I had gotten the property, but anyway, I think it would be a great add-on and make that area really thriving, so Habitat is in favor of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Favor?
Yeah, in favor. I'm Robert Hoy, 67 Stratum Street. I'm not here for the, this one here tonight, I'm here for another one, but when it's Megan House, I want to stand up and say I think you're going to be dealing with some people that are doing some very positive things in Lowell, especially rehab and young women that need this, so, and I thought, I heard it was the Owl Print Company. I think it's a win-win for the city of Lowell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Van?
To you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think this is a worthwhile project. It makes sense. Like a few of the speakers said, it's an upgrade to the neighborhood and it benefits so many different people, and you know, for a business like Megan House and Owl Stamp to grow and even provide more services, I think it's a great addition, so I'm in favor. So I wish you the very best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Van Philip.
Yeah, I think it's a noble cause, so I don't have any objection to it. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
As Billy Hoy suggested, I think it's a win-win for the city. We achieve a revitalization over in the acre neighborhood. We provide a benefit to one of the most established businesses in the city, that being Owl Stamp. And then, as Billy said, the work of the Megan Foundation is God's work. Anything we can do to assist, count me on board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask a few questions, but I echo my fellow members' comments about how great this project will be for the city if we do approve this tonight. Looking forward to seeing this area revitalized, especially by these two outstanding companies that really do help the city quite a bit, and it's a great location for them, in my opinion especially. I just want to understand, the site plan itself seems to have incorporated a lot more green space than what was originally there when it was Friend Lumber. Is that correct, or is it just the way it seems to be indicated on the plan?
I think they made the effort to include that in the plan over here. So probably, they made the effort to include a lot more green space there to make it a more attractive plan.
Right. And then also, there's a subsurface detention system for drainage for the site that we didn't have previously.
That is correct.
So major improvements there.
That's correct.
Which is something to be noted, I think, because currently, the site is almost all paved, and we don't have those drainage systems to help mitigate any surface water right now, so we'll be recharging and we'll be adding green space, which is tremendous.
Thank you. Yeah, we've done that. That's the standard that has to be done with the site plans.
Right.
And we've done that and incorporated in the plan.
And I think the four conditions that were requested, let me see, it's the recommended conditions by the DRG. If my fellow board members would support, I'd like to make that, those conditions of our approval as well.
Can I just back up on that? When the conditions number two and number three, which apply to this, to this site plan and to this lot, were incorporated by the planning department in its decision.
Great.
Number one applies to lot number one as well as the condition number four, so...
It's just two and three then?
Just two and three.
Thank you for pointing that out. You did mention, though, that there's a condition that should be made for the, to work with DPD regarding the lighting?
Correct.
Okay.
To work with DPD for the lighting and to work with DPD for the landscaping plan.
The landscaping is on this item number three, and so we just need to incorporate a condition to work with DPD to...
Right, and that was done, that was done in the planning board as well.
Okay.
And we also have to work with the historic board, since it's in the acre neighborhood historic district.
And that's condition number two of that.
Yes.
So we have the historic board, the landscaping plan with DPD, and then the lighting, so those are the three conditions that I see.
Yes.
Want to incorporate. Okay. And I think the relief that you're asking for is well within reason, so I very much support it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I certainly share the sentiments of my fellow board members. I think everything's been said, that this is going to be, appear to be a very, very great project for, to revitalize the neighborhood. Megan Foundation does God's work, as Mark had said, and you know, and I share the same sentiments as Mark and Mr. Hoy in saying that this is certainly a win-win for the city and for the neighborhood, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark and Sean. So you heard the wish of the board. I wholeheartedly agree that this project is up and running. It's been, been some time, vacant lot in the neighbors. Appreciate you coming out tonight, sir, and giving us your insight as a resident of that neighborhood and with what Habitat has done over there and what this project's going to bring. It's definitely going to bring energized life. Certainly, both entities going into that site are well-deserving of new facilities and with Megan House engaging. Their work to help our citizens and our community citizens better themselves through rehab is always, always a welcome addition. At this point, I have no other comments. Do you have anything else you wish to speak to, Counsel?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, concerns from the board? May I seek a motion?
Before we do, so there were conditions that Dennis brought up, but I think it seems to me that all those conditions have been brought up previously, right? Is that from, from the planning board and from the RFP and everything? Is that, is there any other condition?
Yeah, that's correct. The conditions were brought up previously, and the conditions for the lighting, the landscaping, both of those were previously part of the planning board's conditions.
Okay, so it's just, everything will just be subject to the planning board's conditions anyways, right?
And we'll just be incorporating the conditions that have been accepted by the Counsel in items two and three?
Yeah. So with that, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2018-21, 268 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Barnum Street for variance under Section 6.1.10 for parking setbacks from lot lines, minimum access drive and curb cut opening with the previously mentioned prior conditions set by the planning board and other city bodies.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman, pardon?
Approved with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
Member Jimina?
Approved with conditions.
Counsel, you have been approved, with best of luck with everybody on this project.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to continued business, ZB 2018-26 for a variance, 41 Ellis Realty Trust, 41 Ellis Avenue, Section 5.1, 5.3, 6.1, and 6.5. The applicant is seeking variance approval at 41 Ellis Avenue. The applicant proposes to construct a two-family home without the required lot size, minimum land area per dwelling, minimum lot frontage, minimum usable open space, side setbacks, rear setbacks, front setbacks, and off-street parking requirements. The proposed project is located in traditional two-family zoning district and requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals under Section 5.1, 5.3, 6.1, 6.5. Lowell zoning ordinance and other relief is required. For the record, we have written receipt comments dated August 22nd, and you have those?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just as a matter of record, I know both, I know myself and one other board member did seek advice from DPD and from legal, and I just want to read into the record that the single-family dwelling was permitted to be demolished on 5/18/2018. There seemed to be some dispute on that, but that is part of these comments, and we will no doubtfully be going through each and every one of them. That being said, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Borbo. I'm with PHB Architects here representing Mr. DeRosa. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I have a few more documents I'd like to pass out to the board.
Certainly.
Thank you. Based on our meeting from several weeks ago, there were a number of concerns the board had during our presentation. One of the primary concerns was parking. Another was the height of the building. Another was the amount of bedrooms we had in one unit, which was five bedrooms. And the off-street parking was an issue as well as the existing location of the existing foundation and what we were actually doing on the site. I think the revised documents that we sent to the board last Friday address all those concerns. What we, what I provided you with just now is, in addition to the site plan, which was part of the documents we provided, I just attached some existing condition photographs for comparison purposes so that you would have a better idea in terms of the proximity of the parking that we're proposing to 41 Ellis Ave., which is directly across the street. I think the other issue obviously was a revised narrative regarding the hardship that we have in this case, and I think, as you all know, the existing building was condemned and dilapidated and unsafe. The owners were faced with the option of either demolishing that building or just leaving it as a vacant building. Obviously, they decided to demolish the building. The foundation was determined to be intact for the most part structurally and sound, so allow for a reconstruction on top of it. So what we proposed in our initial filing was to basically use the existing foundation to build from, which is what, what we've done and what exists out there on the site currently. The other issue was the height of the building. The building is actually approximately 33 and a half feet according to the revised documents that we sent to your office. We, I went in and actually added some more dimensions to the plan so that you could see what we had, and I think if you look at the existing condition photos and look at the buildings directly adjacent to the property, you can see that the building falls in line height-wise with the existing building just to the right and fairly close to the building to the left, but still within the 35-foot maximum height requirement in this neighborhood. So our task was to show that we could provide enough parking for the proposed revised use, which is changed from a single-family to a two-family, and as you know, in this zone, each dwelling unit requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit. On the site, we're able to provide at least two parking spaces, tandem parking spaces, and then one assigned parking space on Ellis. And what we're proposing currently is on the property across the street, 46 Ellis, is to add an additional five parking spaces to provide for the total of four parking spaces required for this. required for this change of use. And again, on this document that I sent you, the distance between the two parking spaces is approximately 170 feet, well within the 400-foot requirement of the zoning ordinance or zoning requirement. So I think, you know, we've answered many of the questions you had in the last meeting. I think it's important to note that what we're trying to do here obviously is to bring a dilapidated structure back up to current building code and health standards. For many years, it sat in disrepair and certainly wasn't consistent with the current building codes and health standards. And this new building proposal obviously would bring it to that. We're not proposing anything out of bounds in terms of the neighborhood. The building is consistent with a two-family in the neighborhood. Approximately, I did an assessment of 22 properties in the neighborhood. Of the 22, nine are two-family and 13 are single-family. So it's approximately a 40/60 split between two-family versus single-family. So this is consistent with the neighborhood. We're not trying to do something that's beyond the scope and scale of what is currently, what currently exists in this neighborhood. And I think that as we talked about before, Mr. DeRosa and DeRosa Properties have come into Lowell the past 10 years and tried to rehabilitate and successfully rehabilitated many properties in and around this neighborhood. And we're proposing to do the same thing here.
Thank you very much. That being said, I have spoken and taken under advisement from DPD and from legal. We will be opening up the public hearing for, in favor and opposition. Questions and answers will be relative to the changes for tonight's meeting only. That being said, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tom Flynn, 39 Waterford Street, Lowell. At the hearing two weeks ago, there was reference to third floor having knee walls. There are two dormers, each about 22 feet long, creating a space 21 feet by 21 feet on the third floor. This would be all full height in that part of the building and there would be other parts on the third floor that would also be full height down the center. I saw that there was a plan to request two residential parking signs. Only one is allowed by the building. Also plans for two cars stacked in a non-existent driveway. There is no paving there. It's, it wasn't a driveway. Also, from what I found online on Lowell site, June 19th, an email was sent from the city to the owner requesting that you cease and desist immediately until you receive the appropriate permits. It also stated, denying your building permit application for the construction of a two-family dwelling structure located at 41 Ellis Avenue. July 16th, an email was sent from the city to the owner. I have reviewed the revised plans submitted to Development Services on July 9th, 2018, and have denied your building permit to construct a single-family house. Is it a one, two, or three family? So two weeks ago, we were told that the builder stopped construction on his own. The request to cease and desist was made on June 19th, but work continued well into July. A paper dated August 2nd, 2018, was sent to neighbors informing them of the ZBA meeting on 41 Ellis scheduled for August 27th, 2018. It seems what happened here was build it, and then since it is built, we will get approval. How many other times has this happened in Lowell? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Ray Barrow, which 17 Ellis Ave. I had a prepared statement, but I'm going to have to nitpick it apart since you just want something new on the agenda or that. You know what? If this developer really, really cared, he wouldn't be shoving his variance down our throat through the Board of Appeals. I mean, if I was a developer and I had prior experience, I'd be walking up and down that street, maybe getting the people together and say, this is what I plan to do. You know, how can I, you know, assist you or can I meet your goals into mine or whatever like that? He didn't do that. So this is being rammed down our throats. The second thing is, I'm scratching my head offering parking across the street. What happens if he wants to sell one of those houses or two of those houses? I asked any of the board members, would you buy a house that says, oh, wait a minute, your parking's depending on the guy across the street, how many cars you can park here and everything like that? It doesn't add up. It doesn't make sense. So I don't know, logically, that parking issue could be just thrown right out the window. And if the city really wants this, well, then they can sell part of their park and back of the house, they have parking for them. And for him to come over here now and say like, well, there's only going to be, I made a note here, let's see. You know, he said it keeps repeating, existing foundation. Yeah, well, it's with extensions off it. There's four feet coming off there. You know, if you want, he could have done the whole thing and just used that four feet all the way around. He didn't, but I'm just saying that. And to say that these dormers, who puts 20, 24-foot dormers up there just to make it look pretty? No, he has to balance investment versus payback. That is definitely 100% living space. There's no question about it. I don't care what he says, what his developer, his attorney says, that's living space. So therefore, now we're on the subject. If he's claiming two bedrooms, four people are going to be living on there, there's already five bedrooms. That's five parking places. I'm scratching my head. You know, it's time, we're being hoodwinked here. I don't have no problem him sitting there building. I thank him for sitting there updating a house that sat there for two, three years, but we got to do it right. If he doesn't like the plan to make a one-bedroom or eliminate the dormers on top, whatever like that, well, guess what? Restore it the way it originally was, sell it. In today's housing market, he should be able to still make $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 off it. No, no problem whatsoever. You know, it's fine too, on an end note, to have all these people come up here and praise the, the thing and everything. That's great, but guess what? We are the ones that are going to have to live there. We are the ones that are going to have to tolerate broken building or bottles being thrown down. We're the ones that are going to have to tolerate loud kids taking over the streets. It happened. There's only two of them out there, urinating off the porches, for lack of better words. I mean, the list is endless. Then you get into a situation with the cops, you know, I understand UMass and the cops are both, their hands are tied. But the police, all they'd have to do is say, who's running this party? If he's under 21, he gets busted. He's over 21, all right, everybody at the party sits there, give me their ID. Anybody under 21, they arrest the frickin' thing. An example has to be made. And on a closing note, how many here from Ellis Ave. that oppose this? That are not-
Sir, I will not, sir, we will not entertain-
No?
No. The board will not entertain questioning the public in a public hearing.
Well, how do you know how many people are here from Ellis Ave. that oppose it if they don't speak?
They have an opportunity to speak in the public hearing for or against.
Okay.
It's the wish of the people.
If there's anything new that comes up, new ideas or whatever, like could we suspend rules or whatever to have an opposing agreement or rebuttal on it? I mean, how do, when this ends, how do we get through something new that comes up? Does another continuance be offered or what?
We will move forward with the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then the board members will open up to questions and comments and concerns, and we'll move for a vote. And then we'll, whether it's-
So that's going to happen tonight, approval or not, or another continuance might happen?
Continuance is beyond my control. A continuance is a request by the petitioner.
Okay. That's about it. The two major concerns I'd like to stress is the parking and students. We've done our part on our street, you know. And here's another thing. He brought up, my major concern is any special motion or whatever like that? The city's going to have to carry that through till infinity or whatever like that. And I'm sure after two, you know, like parking or students, like, okay, you know, they're going to have to follow any special stipulation that you have. And I don't foresee that happening, judging that we're sitting at this stage right now after two, three years, this house is knocked down, and I'm a little stunned at this guy who's looking for a permit on variances and everything like that. Because supposedly, everybody has spoken here and said there's been a lot of buildings that he's put up in the city. I'm shocked at why we're even here today for permit and variance. He should know the codes. He should know the procedure and everything like that. Students in parking, gentlemen, that's a really, really, it doesn't sound like much, but a major, major concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Good evening. My name is John Hamlet, 495 Farnham Avenue. I'm co-chair of Pawtucketville Citizens Council. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request that, consistent with the other land use boards, we routinely request that if there are people who don't want to speak but who do want to indicate whether they are for or in opposition to a proposal, that they be allowed to identify themselves by raising the hand. That request usually comes from the chairman or from the board. And so I respectfully request that these people have an opportunity to at least identify why they're here.
Sir, as, as previously stated, all members of the public have an opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition. As in past practice, we have had letters of support and letters of opposition. That being said, moving forward, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Good evening.
Diane Legu, 81 Ellis Ave. This developer is single-handedly changing the demographic of Pawtucketville. He has taken away opportunities of families to take advantage of our parks, the nearby schools, and the public transportation. I live on the dead end and the other properties, I think the one across the street, they're parking down the end of the street when they have their parties and things like that. We can't put up signs, you can't park there and all, but, but the bottom line is they're, they're taking away opportunities for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? No, sir.
With this going on right now, we're changing the demographics of, of the whole street. It's turning into a transient student populated versus a working-class street. And I think that's very, very important. Because I mean, you know, if that's the case, I wish UMass would come up, offer us all $200,000. They can sit there and build dorms all the way from one end of the street to the other and get this over with. I mean, what she just said was very, very important. A transient population versus a hard working-class street right now. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Fornier. I live at 33 Ellis. And I just want to make a point that I am in opposition of this, specifically the parking. My house is two, two doors down and people are constantly parking. Just taking pictures the other day, the people are parking in front of my house. So it's, it's a reality. It's definitely an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? Sir?
My name is John Kapler. I'm at 17 Waterford Street, right around the corner. One of the questions that baffles me here is the definition of what this building is. Is it a single-family, a two-family, or a rooming house, a dormitory, or a frat house? What is it? There's one word in the zoning code that, when they talk about zoning and it's a TTF, the first T is traditional. Does anybody on the board think that's a traditional two-family house? If you do, look up the word "traditional" and then compare it to all the other two-family houses on the street. That is not a traditional two-family house, not by any stretch of the imagination. If you continue to look at the table of usage in the zoning code, it easily fits as a dormitory, as a fraternity house, or as a rooming house. All of those things, that is what that conforms to, and none of those things are allowed in the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Would you like to open it up to the board? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask to defer my comments until I hear further debate from my colleagues. Thank you.
Granted, thank you. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just ask a couple of questions specifically about the new material that was presented. I understand that you're decreasing the number of bedrooms in the second unit, the upper unit, to four bedrooms.
That's correct.
And the size of those bedrooms differ. There's bedrooms that range in size from nine by 12, which are relatively small, and one is eight by 12, and only one of them is an average-sized bedroom being 12 by 12. So there's really three relatively small bedrooms, maybe suitable for a twin bed or barely a full-size bed. And then one that's more suitable for a full-size bed or two twin beds, so. And even the headroom in that upper third level is relatively tight. You only have a swath down the center there that looks like about four and a half or five feet wide that has the eight-foot ceiling height. It really slopes off pretty dramatically. So the bedrooms on the third level are not spacious by any stretch. They're relatively modest. Is that accurate?
They're modest in the sense that their ceiling height isn't a full eight feet throughout the-
Right.
-entire footprint. They're long, longer than the ones down below, but what the intent was, was to carve those bedrooms out of the existing attic space or the attic space that was left over, which is what we tried to do. The, the dormer that exists on the south elevation is simply there to provide headroom for the bathroom and the stair. It's not part of either bedroom.
The section that you have that depicts the height in the dormer, at the low end of the dormer, you have a height of four foot two?
Yes, four, two, and seven eighths.
Once again, a relatively modest dormer and headroom. So that bathroom shower element on the third level, or tub shower element, really is, is, is compact.
It's compact, but it works because what we've done is we've located the toilet against the low wall-
Right.
-which allows you to sit at the toilet and stand at it with proper head height. And the shower controls for the tub are all along the eight-foot wall. So if you were to sit in the tub, you'd be against the four-foot-two height, but that would be more than adequate for somebody to utilize that tub as a tub. And when they utilize it as a shower, they're up against the eight-foot wall.
Great. I think what you did on the second-floor plan brings in much more of a traditional feel for a second apartment where we have two bedrooms and a relatively reasonable- where we have two bedrooms and a relatively reasonable living-room, dining, kitchen arrangement. So the only element maybe that we could think of as outside of the traditional, if it's even outside, is the fourth small eight-by-12 bedroom. That has a real compromised headroom height. You really have a strong slope to one side.
Right.
Almost like a study, reading nook kind of room that could possibly have a single bed in it. All right, so I think that that's commendable, that we seem to have, in my opinion, what reflects similarity to standard, traditional second apartment. The first-floor apartment is only a two-bedroom apartment, which is well within a traditional. It's even maybe small for a traditional, but many wouldn't. I'm puzzled by your parking layout. So the parking layout, which is key to this, as you heard, is in the property across the street. And the property across the street has a width of 42.43 feet. And in order to maintain zoning, you have a three-foot buffer around the perimeter of that. And I think in order to maintain zoning, Patrick, are we required to have green space at that lot?
The 46 Ellis?
Forty-six, forty-eight Ellis?
Yeah, so you have to have usable open space and screening around the perimeter of parking.
So I don't see that listed. Maybe I'm... If you could just kinda help me see where that is provided for with the new parking layout.
The screening?
The green space?
We haven't shown anything on that. That was simply to demonstrate the location of the parking across the street. And I think if you recall in the last meeting when we were discussing this, I think that the board had asked for potentially an easement from this piece of property to provide for this parking.
Yes.
However, unless, we couldn't provide an easement because it was still in question as to whether we'd even receive the approval for 41 Ellis. So to go through the process of actually executing an easement would require us to go to the registry of deeds. So this is simply a plan to show, yes, we can provide parking there. Beyond that, if we were to show landscaping and all those things, we certainly could do that. But this was just to demonstrate that there were at least five spaces available there. And we only really need one with this particular building because under the definition of two units, you need four spaces. And we're already providing three, two onsite and one designated offsite.
The one designated offsite, I don't think meets the requirement for zoning.
Okay.
So I think you're required to have two additional parking spaces. But what I was hoping to see was a workable plan that didn't require additional relief because your parking plan provided here doesn't adequately show the green space required per dwelling unit at 46, 48, if we were to accept-
Right.
-this parking.
Okay.
So we're not there yet, in my opinion, with the parking layout.
All right.
Even if we were to condition it with an easement being provided, which I think would satisfy the requirement for the 41. So, and then just logistically, sometimes people drive pickup trucks.
Right.
And you only have 36 feet, 36.43 feet-
Right.
-to, and your parking spaces are eight feet wide. So to adequately back out, or hopefully do a backing maneuver to drive out, because you really have a very narrow access drive by that porch at 46, 48. I think you are overstating the number of parking spaces you adequately can provide on that lot. I think we have to show green space per dwelling unit to meet zoning. And we should show adequate backing turn radius so that we can see that you provided for those two spaces that need to be designated to the adjacent lot.
I think at the very least, we should show a hammerhead on the site plan that provides for backing out. That hammerhead could be as little as eight feet deep or even 10 feet deep, if that worked. But by providing the hammerhead, we'd have to eliminate at least one spot, potentially two. But we'd still meet our parking requirement for 41 if we did that and provide for additional open space.
Patrick, what's the square footage per dwelling unit, if you recall, in the TTF district?
Square footage or the number?
What would be required for 46, 48 Ellis Ave? I think there's a two-
Two families.
Two family?
So four spaces, two for each unit?
No, no, the open space, the green space required per dwelling unit.
Five hundred square feet per dwelling unit, so 1,000 square feet.
Which is sizable.
Right.
So I think I'd like to see a block diagram showing how the 1,000 square feet happens. And I'm guessing that two spaces would be the target. If you get three, great.
Right.
But two spaces and the hammerhead with 1,000 square feet would be what I would expect to see so that we could have it meet zoning and not require additional relief. And no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Mr. Bobo, thank you for, you know, going back to the drawing board on, you know, I had some concerns previously about the height of the building and the layout and everything. And glad that you're in your client. Went back to the drawing board on this, thought knocking the units down from five to four, little weary, but it's a little better. But I have really many concerns about the parking. And the one main thing that concerns me is the fact that we can't even address anything on 46, 48 Ellis Ave at this point, even though Dennis mentioned it and brought it up. That's not before us. It hasn't been properly noticed. There are some numerous, according to what the DPD provides, there are still numerous requirements as far as variances with regards to 46, 48 Ellis Ave for the parking, even to put that parking issue in play. So, and in addition, even though they kinda mentioned that we may be able to, you know, address the parking today, I'm really not comfortable doing it unless we have everything kind of wrapped up in a one-knee bow with, you know, whatever variances need to be addressed at 46, 48 Ellis Street on the parking and as well as here. So I just, I'm just struggling with that right now. And I think my suggestion would probably be to either continue this again and have everything heard all at once. So there's no, I'm just worried about some confusion. If we grant this with some sort of condition about further variances on 46, 48, and those aren't granted, then you're kinda stuck in everything. Now you're stuck with the building there, and you can't do anything with it. So that's my concern. And hearing all the other concerns of the public, which I certainly do take into account and appreciate, I'm very, I'm disheartened to hear that Mr. DeRosa didn't, again, when I suggested it, reach out to the public to try to talk about, you know, reach out to the neighborhood to try to talk about it.
Not to make an excuse, but we received the site plan Thursday evening and then tried to turn that around and get that back to you guys by Friday.
I totally understand.
We had nothing to present to them.
I totally, I totally understand that. And not to say it against you or Mr. DeRosa, I mean, I think it's just, I had suggested at the last meeting, and I was hoping at least some sort of outreach.
We wanted to do the same thing. And honestly, I didn't get it until Thursday night, turned it around. And I wanted to get it to you at least by Friday-
Yeah.
-so you'd have a chance to review it prior to this meeting. But our intention was to put a presentation together and present it, but we just didn't get the information in time.
Yeah, listen, I certainly appreciate that. And I said, you know, that the updated plans are moving in the, I think, in the right direction a little bit as far as what our concerns, the board's concerns were at the last meeting. The parking is really weighing on me right now, especially, I understand we're still trying to get there, but now with the fact that you're gonna need further variances on 46 and 48 Ellis Street that coincide with the variances that we're doing here, it's kinda making it very difficult for me to make a decision on this at this point, which I think my suggestion would be to try to get everything else, everything heard by the board all at once, if that's possible, Patrick, if we can. I mean, wouldn't that, would be able to, if they notice it properly as far as the variances required on 46, 48?
I suppose it's possible. This would just, this particular petition for 41 would have to be continued so that there's enough time for the submittal of-
Yeah.
For like notice requirements and everything.
Yeah.
So it couldn't be next week. It obviously would have to be a month at least out, if not more.
Yeah, so. But that's where I'm going at this point right now. As far as, I'll reserve some of my other comments, but that's what I'm thinking at this point right now. But I'll listen to the rest, the remainder of my board members, and we'll figure it out from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I know I appreciate all the kind of updates and the revising of this property. You know, you decreasing the bedroom down the floor. It does make the project a little more palatable to the neighborhoods and I think to the board as well. I think, like my colleague said, with the ongoing issues, 46, 48, I don't know if we can count that as parking spots. You know, and the dormers or the attics, I do have concerns about those as well. If we go with a vote tonight, would you be okay with the condition of making that attic or dormer space non-living, your non-residential space? Would you be okay with that?
The dormer space that we provided provides headroom for the bathroom and access for the stair. So there was never any real living space in the dormer. We tried to carve the bedrooms out of the attic space that was left over, so.
Yeah, I think if you just put it down as a condition, that it won't be a living or kind of residential.
It's not another room.
Okay.
Certainly.
Yeah, if you don't mind that condition, I think I would feel comfortable with that, if it's okay with my colleagues, if we do go on with the vote tonight. Like my colleagues said, I am concerned with the parking sale, the inadequate parking spots. So those are my comments for the moment, at least. But I reserve the right to comment later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. As a matter of public notice and interest, Mr. Jamanja will not be participating in the vote tonight as he was absent from the last meeting and was unable to view the tapes. That being said, you've heard the concerns, particularly towards the easement at 46 and 47. Kinda leaves a percentage of this incomplete because it's directly related to the parking. Those are comments for thought as we move forward, either with a vote tonight or a continuance at your discretion. And that being said, Mark?
I have several questions, Mr. Chairman. I know you had indicated that we may only be allowed to speak with respect to the new items that were brought up. So if I'm out of line or not following the appropriate protocol, I would hope you'd keep me in line.
Certainly.
My questions are the same as I had the last time we met. And it all has to do with the parking. And I have just as many questions for the petitioner as I do for our very own planning department. I'm reading the additional comments that were provided to us, and they indicate that the board should note that the use of the property is not one of the votes in front of us this evening. As you recall, my main line of questioning was just that. What is the intended use? And for the life of me, I don't understand how an experienced developer such as yourself, Mr. DeRosa, is not willing to provide your fellow property owners in that neighborhood with a clear explanation of exactly how you intend to use that property. I'm scratching my head, wondering, how can I determine the number of parking spaces that would be adequate for this building if I don't know the actual use of the building? Question to you, Patrick. If this was a traditional two-family building, it's my understanding that we would require four parking spaces. That's correct, okay. If the petitioner decided to rent these rooms in a dormitory fashion with there being four bedrooms, how many spaces would be required?
So I'm not even certain that a rooming is allowed in this district, so.
So if a rooming isn't allowed, doesn't that help us all here? Doesn't that greatly relieve what the residents' concerns are? It sounds as though-
I just wanna make it clear, the petition here is not for a rooming house. It's for a two-family.
Right, and I understand that. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to get a better understanding so I can render fair judgment. As I stated at the last meeting, the petitioner and the residents are both entitled to rights. And I'm having great difficulty determining whether the petitioner is doing anything wrongful. So I'm looking to the city as a resource to provide me with those answers so that I can better make judgment. If we could get some clarification, because I had asked the petitioner what his intent, intended usage was. And he had indicated that he wasn't willing to do that because of marketing and whatnot. Sometimes you rent to a family, other times you may rent in a dormitory fashion. Excuse me if I'm not expressing myself correctly with dormitory fashion. So how do I render that decision? I mean, it's a moot point if we're gonna tell the residents he can't have a dormitory situation there. And now we got two parking spots for each unit? Seems to me to clear it up. However, if we leave that ambiguity out there, and these residents are sitting there saying, four bedrooms could be four more parking spaces, and the petitioner can't provide them, I don't know how I can render decision on this.
So I mean, on a regular basis, we don't, you know, the definition of a family is not more than three unrelated people, and that's kind of, you know, the fact of zoning, and that's what we go by. We don't, for every property, ask for, you know, clarification in terms of how the use is used. I don't know that that's legal to ask.
Yeah, I don't either. That's why I'm treading carefully as to not infringe upon anyone's rights.
Right.
So I'm looking for the city to educate me with respect to that.
Going by the facts of the fact that a family is not more than three unrelated people and understanding that that's their proposal forward, is that it's a two-family. So in this case, each unit would not have more than three unrelated individuals.
And that's the big question that I had when looking at this last meeting. The city ordinance tells us, it defines a family. And whether you have a family living there or you have a rooming situation, it affects the amount of parking spaces. So it seems to me, and the common sense that I possess, that we have a right to question the usage of the property. Otherwise, how can we determine how many parking spaces are necessary? Now, you had indicated that the city is not in the habit of asking what the usage is. Well, I submit that maybe it isn't. But is it within our purview? Is it illegal to ask such a question? This would solve this, I believe, if we could get some legal opinion as to whether we can tell the petitioner. We'd be in favor, but not as a rooming house. We'll be in favor, as the gentleman mentioned, traditional two-family. Rooming house, again, just subject to my interpretation. I may be inaccurate. Traditional two-family, to me, does not equal dormitory rooms. I'll conclude with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments or concerns of the board? Sean?
I, I, I can understand Mark's concerns about asking for that. I mean, we gotta go, and not to, not to, not to say anything, but we have to go by what the code says and what the, you know, it's traditional two-family, what the definition of family is. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, in some of these instances, we have to take the word of the owner, petitioner, uh, as to what they're, what they're gonna, what, what is gonna be, so, uh, this, really, it's kind of difficult to, to enforce that, really. That would be, that would be the building department's, uh, purview, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, right, Patrick, if they discover that there's more, occupancy is more than what it should be under the two-traditional, under, under whatever the zoning is and what that, so that would be, that would be in the purview of the building, building department to take care of, I think, but that's from my... It's my, my legal, my legal perspective, partially, but, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not the law department. I don't want to speak for the city. That's just my, my, uh, reading of the, my reading of the code and...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I tend to agree. However, you indicated that in a majority of cases, that we take the petitioner at his word. And I would be willing to do so because this petitioner does have a good track record here in the city. I have to give him that. But when I asked him to put on the record, asked him specifically if he would tell his fellow residents and property owners on Ellis Ave to declare what his usage was, he declined to do so. So he's put me in a situation where I cannot just take him at his word because he hasn't offered me an answer.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from the board members?
Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Um, I, I just want to say, um, you know, um, a lot's been said about this property, what, you know, what it could be, what, um, you know, is it two-family, is it like a, like a dorm, rooming, boarding house? You know, I, I think, and then this is my opinion, Mr. Chairman, um, I think it's unfair to the property owner, a little unfair that, you know, he, I think, in, in my interpretation or my, uh, hearing of his communication, he's gonna, you know, sell it, rent it, whatever kind of the market bears, he said in the last meeting. And I do, I do, I do agree that there's still a lot of unanswered questions. But you know, it's, it's kind of, I think, in, kind of, uh, our own individual decision-making process, you know, with, with the prerequisites and the requirements and, and in the zoning codes, you know, if you want to vote an item up or down, so... I, I just want to say that, you know, it's, you know, I think there's still a lot of information that, that I need. But you know, if, if you have to vote, you know, I, I have a, I think a certain way that I would vote. But if we continue, we continue it, and that's up to the applicant, if they want to continue it, uh, to, to get more information. But you know, I, I, I think, in my opinion, and no offense to anyone, I think Mr. DeRosa did answer those questions about, you know, whatever the market bears, you know, maybe, might be to a family, to renters, to students, whatever the market bears, he said. So that's just my understanding of it, so I just, I wanted to comment a little bit about that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Just want to, uh, as a point of clarification, there are controls and measures within the city and inspectional services. There are controls and measures within this board of, as an administrative review to ensure that the zoning board, uh, codes and the decision of this board are upheld. And to, to answer the gentleman earlier, what, what are those control measures? The control measures would be an administrative review after six months. We've done minimum of six months, um, and most recently, we had a, a public hearing on administrative review, and we had all the parties in place and had open conversation, uh, good, bad, and indifferent to resolve some of those issues, um, on that particular petition. So I wanted to answer that question because I didn't answer it earlier, sir, and I wanted to have that question answered for you directly. The control and measures by the zoning board of appeals would be an administrative review after six months. And then, within that time period, um, yes, the code, the zoning court ordinance does, uh, have language in there, um, relative to family, uh, as indicated by DPD. And those control measures would be held up by inspectional services. So both those items are, are controllable by, by zoning law and by the purview of this board. So that, that's a point of clarification, as, as far as I can see it. As it relates to what we're looking at now, whether we move forward with a vote or continuance, I think primarily the hanging limb here is the easement on forty-six, forty-seven, and it's kind of, it's a hard catch twenty-two. Uh, we're all kind of looking to you for an answers. It's a difficult question to answer. Uh, it's a legal matter, and it rarely holds bearing on, on the vote. I know the, um, the reduction in bedrooms, um, we know the requirement per bedroom, per lot, things that are coming back into play, those two things, is the, is the housing piece, which to Mr. Brier's point and to his question, he, he did, he did ask. The question was, was answered to the petitioner's, to his knowledge and to his ability. The only thing we can do is we can use the definitions within the code to ensure that those, those residents are as they are defined in the code. So I, I wanted to clarify some of those because I, I didn't get to answer that question, and I, I felt it was obligated to the public. What is, what are the recourse's, and those are the recourse's, um, if the petition moves forward for a, a vote and if it's approved. Those are my comments at this point. Any other comments or concerns of the board? I see, I turn to you, sir, and...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I confer with the owner for a few minutes?
Certainly.
Thank you.
By all means, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We would, um, request to continue, uh, the hearing and allow us to, uh, properly notify, the forty-six, forty-eight Ellis for the parking and open space requirements. Uh, however, during that waiting period, uh, the owner has requested, uh, your permission to at least, uh, board up the building and make it safe so people can't go in and out of the buildings that are currently searched, which is wide open.
Certainly, we, we can have you work with DPD on that. Um, that's, that's a reasonable request. So you're looking for the continuance would be at, at least thirty days.
Right, so...
If not forty-five, correct? Because we need thirty days, Patrick, for public notice.
Right, so a submittal deadline for the October eleventh meeting date is, is this Thursday, September thirteenth? And then the next one would be for the October twenty-second meeting, which would give you some time until the September twenty-fourth?
Yeah, we, the, just wanted to clarify, make the building weather tight, so...
Yeah, and, and in that regard, you can work directly with DPD, um, so that they're aware, that, that request was made to board up and make weather tight. That it's not continuum of construction.
Correct.
Because you are, you are still, um...
Yep.
Still have to go through the permit process. Just for the record, as, as Patrick stated, uh, there's two different options on dates. I want to make sure that you have the necessary amount of time to prepare, and the necessary amount of time to move forward if need.
Uh, the September thirteenth deadline would be tight. I mean, we could make it, uh, and we'll try to make it. If we can't, when is the next deadline? Twenty-fourth. And when would be the hearing for the twenty-fourth?
October twenty-second.
All right, we will, um, try and make the thirteenth, September thirteenth deadline. And, uh, if we can't, we will notify the board in advance that we're not gonna be able to make it, and we'll shoot for the next one.
Okay, so the continuance date would be, for the record, Patrick?
It sounds like October, um...
Twelve?
Twelfth.
October eleventh.
Oh, yeah.
Thursday, October eleventh.
We'll be, yes, for the record, be advised that it's a Thursday night due to the holiday of Columbus. That Monday evening pushes the zoning board meetings out till Thursday.
All right, thank you.
And in the meantime, if you feel as though that this deadline date doesn't present enough time, you certainly communicate, uh, that to DPD.
We'll, we'll let them know before, uh, the end of business tomorrow.
Very well.
All right.
That being said, for the matter of public record, uh, we're gonna move forward with a, a vote for a continuance. This is the notice, a public notice for the continuance. There will, there will be no, um, requirement for notice for the continuance of the ZBA. Any other comments or concerns from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment, um, as a disclosure to, to the board and to the public. October eleventh, um, I plan to be out of the country for a while, so, um, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, if, if Mr. Jemena just watches the first meeting, um, he was here for this meeting, he might be able to vote. So I just wanted to let you and the public know that I might not be here for the October eleventh meeting. Apologies.
Very well, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you for that information. Uh, if alternate member, Jamanji does, uh, review. Jamanji, you do review the meeting previous, uh, through video. You're here tonight, uh, you will be able to sign off with the DPD that you did view that meeting and understanding you will be a voting member that evening. Any other comments or concerns from the board? That being said, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six for forty-one Ellis Avenue to continue this hearing to October eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Continue to October eleventh.
Member Peck?
Uh, approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Continue to October eleventh.
Member McCarthy?
Continue to October eleventh.
Member Brier?
Approve continuance.
Thank you. You've been approved for your continuance. Look forward to your working with DPD.
Great.
Moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
I want to thank all the residents for coming out tonight and speaking in favor and opposition and bringing their concerns to the board. It's greatly appreciated. Okay, moving forward on the new business. Moving forward on the new business, ZB two thousand eighteen twenty-seven for a variance. Michael Kawaya at Three Dalton Street, section six point one point ten. The applicant is seeking variance approval to build a driveway for an existing single-family home at Three Dalton Street. The home is in traditional neighborhood multifamily TMF zoning district, and proposed driveway requires variance under section six point one point ten for minimum width, minimum setback from the building, and for any other relief required under the laws of zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Brenda Gould. I'm with Habitat for Humanity. The first time I was here was by accident. No, just kidding. Um, I'm representing as Habitat, not as legally, the Kawaya family who's here tonight. We built a house, rehabbed a house actually for them back in two thousand sixteen. When we rehabbed the house, we thought that there was a driveway there. Um, and so we realized afterward when we called the pavers that there wasn't one. So tonight, parking is clearly a, a topic for this board. Um, we'd like to take some cars off the street and put a driveway in. Um, I do have a couple other pictures. I apologize. I thought there was only two groups here. I'm just gonna give you...
Thank you.
Those are pictures that were taken, uh, last evening. So the Kawayas have two cars, and, um, we are asking for variance in order to put a driveway next to the house. Um, they do currently have a resident parking sticker in the front. But as you can see, that, that, there's a lot of cars for that street. Um, when the snow comes, there's very few places to park. So we feel that we'd like to put a driveway in. That would be at Habitat's expense, not at the, um, the homeowners, because we thought there was supposed to be a driveway to begin with. Uh, I, I believe the area is a little tight. I did submit some pictures of previous, of other in the area. Um, I didn't take measurements, but there is a fence on one side, and then there's the house. Um, so we feel that we can fit a driveway in so that they can put at least one of the cars in there, possibly two, uh, tandem parking. And we'd like to ask, uh, for your approval to put... And we'd like to ask for your approval to put in this driveway. And the family is here, and they may want to say a few words. We really just want to be good neighbors, and parking is always a very sensitive issue. We'd like to take the cars off the street so that it won't be.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your proactive approach...
Yeah.
...as it relates to this property.
Okay. I don't know if the homeowners want to just say something, or do you need anything else?
It's their choice, if they...
Okay.
They feel they want to, that's fine, if they feel...
They all came out tonight, so I wanted to give Claudine the opportunity, just to say parking.
Certainly, she's certainly welcome. Just state your name and address.
Hello, hi, I'm Claudine. I'm thirty years in college, and I just want to say thank you for taking the time to look for our case. Having this house is like a blessing for us, because right now, I'm going to college and working and coming home and being able to study and have my own space is good. So by having a parking, I think it's going to help me more, because coming from work or from school and not finding a parking to put my car and having to struggle for it is really hard. So if the board say yes, I'll be really happy, because it's going to help me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else at this time?
That's all, that's all. We're just asking if we can put that driveway in.
Certainly. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the board, to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's really no problems with this. It seems like a, it seems like a no-brainer, I guess, it's just minimum width. I guess the only one concern I did have, maybe Patrick can answer this, I mean, it's a tight, tight space there, and it looks like we're taking up some green space. There's no green space effect, would there be any green space affected as far as having them pave?
I think I can answer that. There's no green space there.
There's no green space there.
That property was donated property. Behind the house, there's probably a couple of feet of already blacktop. The front does have a little bit of space. I don't know if there's grass actually there or not, but there's nothing on the side, because we thought it was a driveway.
All right, well, yeah, because, I mean, one of the main pictures was, it looks like where the driveway is supposed to go, but it's got grass on it.
Yeah, no, that, there's no grass there now. We thought we were putting a driveway in. There's just a little bit of space in front of the house.
Okay, so there was an attempt to put the driveway in, but then you realized that...
Right, when we hired the pavers, they said they, the drawings didn't have a driveway, and they couldn't put one in, so then we started this process.
Well, I mean, it was, the issue wasn't brought up in comments from DPD, and it was just one of the few things that just caught my attention real quick, but otherwise, again, this makes perfect sense, and I wish you the best of luck, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know the site very well. I lived next door when I first got married, so I know this street, and back then, it was tough parking there. That was thirty-four years ago, so I'm sure it hasn't gotten any better.
It hasn't gotten better, no.
I think the size of the parking space is really going to work out for one car. I don't see how two cars would make it in there unless they were smart cars, maybe.
Yeah, at least one car off the street, yeah.
I think one, and then it still allows you to still have a placard parking space on the street, and so that still gives you, I think, the two spaces that you're hoping for, so I'm glad that you allowed the three feet between the parking space and the adjacent lot, because I think it's important to provide that buffer, as minimal as it is, to at least honor that, and then put the relief sought at the dimension between the parking space and the structure itself. So I think that you've done a great job of orienting this, and you've done a great job on the property, so nice job on developing that, really well done, and I think this makes a lot of sense as far as providing that one off-street parking space. I wish there was more green space, I wish it was something.
I wish so too, but, yeah.
But I think we got everything else, so best of luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
More parking for Centerville, count me in, all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, HABZF does amazing work. This property looks amazing, and there's no opposition, and, you know, you're trying to decrease traffic and get cars off the street, so I'm in favor, so I wish you and Ms. Kawaya and the family the very best of luck, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Philip?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but the only concern the transportation engineer has is visibility when backing out. How do, is it good?
It's good if there's no cars parking next to us, but it's like any other spot. I mean, you could have two cars on the side. The street is wide enough to back out and pull out, I mean, it's, even with a car on the opposite side, but it's tight. I mean, those pictures, I don't know if they made it down to you, they are tight, but you can pull out of there, you just have to be very careful.
Okay, all right, well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. So you hear the wish of the board. Certainly, again, I want to thank you for working with the family and helping them with this issue that came up after they moved in. They seem very happy and excited to be in their new home and a little tied in the corner, so that being said, I'd like to seek a motion.
Thank you. They're a great family, thank you.
One quick question before we add, Mr. Chairman, and I don't think it's going to affect much either, but I know there was one comment from DPD about they currently have an on-street parking space reserved, the family, are they going to maintain that with the driveway if approved?
Because they have two cars, so if we can only put one in that parking spot, which is probably accurate, I haven't actually measured all of that, they'll keep the one out front. They'll have a second car off the street.
Yeah, that's just one of those things that DPD brought up that I, to possibly inquire about, but I don't think it's going to maybe possibly affect much. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion under ZB two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven for Three Dalton Street for variance under section six point one point ten for construction of a driveway, minimum width, and minimum setback from the building.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in. Moving forward under new business, ZB two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two for a special permit. The applicant is Ryan Betancourt, thirteen seventeen Middlesex Street, section twelve point four point D one. The applicant is seeking special permit approval to open a takeout restaurant within an existing building at thirteen seventeen Middlesex Street. The building is located in a light industrial L.A. zoning district, and the use requires a special permit under section twelve point four point D one and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Yes, I have some supporting documents also I want to get to you guys.
Certainly.
Good evening, Ryan Betancourt, Fifty Mansion Drive, Lowell, and I am seeking a special permit approval to open a takeout restaurant within an existing building at thirteen seventeen Middlesex Street. The proposed project located at thirteen seventeen Middlesex Street is currently the site of the Palms Corporation owned and operated by Edward and Eileen Weeza, and we will be looking to retrofit a three hundred eighty square foot unused portion of the Toupe Car Wash building into a takeout restaurant, and I am proposing to serve customers via a curbside walk-up window. Customers would quay on the sidewalk between Marginal Street and the building. Marginal Street provides access to one of two curb cuts for thirteen seventeen Middlesex Street. The other is on Middlesex Street. The short street terminates at a UMass Lowell dormitory, which also has a curb cut on Middlesex Street. Marginal has sidewalks on both sides of the street. According to section one point, six point one point four, a takeout restaurant must provide one parking space per two hundred square feet. The proposed restaurant would require two parking spaces. The site plan shows three new parking spaces. One of the car wash bays will be closed to accommodate the parking spaces, while the other bay will remain operational. The restaurant will be, the restaurant will be located on a one-level building with all mechanical and storage facilities. These facilities will include the kitchen and the office, and all orders and pickups will be serviced through the curbside walk-up window. Receiving and loading will be accessed through the rear of the building and will not interfere with the traffic flow on Middlesex Street. And the proposed restaurant will provide the city with well-presented, fresh, never-frozen food, and the project will have an immediate beneficial impact on the community, adding jobs and revenue to the city. Anything else?
Thank you. Before we move it on, just, you in receipt, you in receipt and the owner in receipt of the comments from the city?
Say that one more time?
Are you in receipt of the comments from the city?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and you went over, you reviewed them?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, the building department, transportation engineering, if either department have no issues with this, with this petition. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Well, thank you for letting me speak twice tonight, I appreciate that. My name is Robert Hoyey, I live at sixty-seven Stratum Street in Lowell, Mass. I've known Mr. Weeza for approximately fifty years. He's a hard-working and very generous person. I've witnessed Mr. Weeza being very generous to inmates just released to the streets, and I've also witnessed Mr. Weeza taking care of several homeless people that live around his business on Middlesex Street. I'm a U.S. veteran with a disability, something else Mr. Weeza has a passion for. He has helped me in the past, and he continues to help people in need. I also believe Mr. Weeza will treat customers with deep respect and has demonstrated to me to be a person of integrity. Mr. Weeza loves to take good care of his customers, and I believe his ideas of combining good food and the arts is a good win, especially about music, for the city of Lowell and for Mr. Weeza. I come here tonight to show support for Mr. Weeza's new business venture. The young person, Mr. Weeza, has put in charge to run this business is Ryan Betancourt, a real nice person and a proven chef and a proven fast-food cook, and he also grew up on the street where Mr. Weeza lives. I do know Mr. Weeza gets a real kick out of putting someone to work. He has told me on many occasions that within a year, he plans on hiring seventy-five more employees, and I hope to be one of them. I will end this with this, all businesses in Lowell need our support, so go out and buy something made in Lowell, maybe a sandwich, or maybe have your car washed. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyey, appreciate your time. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor, sir?
Hello, my name is Robert Kent. I live on Pleasant Street, it's not over where this is at, but I've known Eddie for a long time. I, you know, this area where he proposes to open this, he's got a lot of room there. I don't think it changes the characteristics or adds, you know, anything negative to that area. I'm here because, really because Eddie's been good to me, he's put a lot of people to work. I think he's putting people to work here, that's why I'm here. I don't see anything negative about it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
My name is Todd O'Donnell, and I've known Eddie for twenty-five years, but furthermore, I think that the place of business that he's looking to open will benefit UMass Lowell because there are dorms in back with thousands of kids, and these kids now will be able to walk instead of drive, and we all know what happens at night when, when people that are having fun or being students drive, so I think it would benefit the public as well as the city of Lowell, and I'm all for Eddie in this business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Donna Judson, and I'm prior, I've known Ryan probably about nine years or so, and I actually used to live over in that neighborhood. Right now, I currently live in Centerville, but actually, living over in that neighborhood, I don't know that they do need another business over there. I used to do daycare, and I could actually walk over there when I was doing my daycare, and it would be great, somewhere to bring the kids, something to get for lunch, something different to do, and also would benefit the university. It would be great for the kids that, you know, going to the university somewhere over there to go, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are you? I met Eddie, he was about five years ago, he's a great guy. I worked for him during the weekends, he's the best, he's the best, and I like to get things going, you know? All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project makes sense, you know, like Mr. Betancourt said, it's a large property, a lot of land, and I think it's always a great idea when we kind of re, kind of revamp or like use this shared space for like another business to kind of work off each other. So I think you do very well, sir, it's a great location running to the university. And on a point of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that that is my station where I go to get my car washed, and on one occasion, I went there, and I believe Mr. Weeza was there, and the machine wasn't working, and I was with my girlfriend, and he just let me pass, and he's like, oh, yeah, just go through, it's fine, you know, tell your friends and whatever, so, so I go to Simmons, and Mr. Hoyey, that he's a really generous man, and so I think, I wish you and Mr. Betancourt the best of luck, so appreciate your business, so best of luck, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Philip?
Yeah, I love pizza, so, probably you might see me there. It's a good gig. The only question I have is, I have probably concern, as indicated here, do you have, do you make any provision for trash?
We do have a dumpster, and we plan on sharing that dumpster with the other business and, you know, disposing weekly.
Okay, all right, okay. That was just my concern, all right, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
I might come by.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
I think it's a neat idea. I wish you the best of luck. I also think that the comments that the resident made about the proximity to the dormitories and the possible need for not driving at that time of night, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I hope you are the beneficiary of that, as long as, as well as the students. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I agree with my fellow board members that I love to see this kind of repurposing of something that has possibility, and it seems like a great fit for the neighborhood. The comments from the city, DPD, one of them is about the location of the service window and the idea of it sharing access with the four-foot sidewalk. I was wondering if you could just speak to how that, you envision that working and still providing access for people using the sidewalk that aren't going to your restaurant.
Okay, that sidewalk there is eight feet, and we plan on using four feet for tables and stuff, and we want people to quay over into the front portion of the building where the bear and the gazebo is, so all congregation, the line will go right up to the front part of the building, so there will be... So, there will be nobody in the street, so no traffic deficiencies or anything.
Since that's not part of the presentation, I would just like to ask that we make a condition that you work with DPD to develop the site plan to adequately show how you're going to have outdoor seating and provide for the access to the drive-in window or the service window without interrupting the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you.
That's okay. But other than that, I think that it's a great idea, and I really look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you to you, Mr. Chairman. First, I think I share the same sentiment as my fellow board members. It's a very great idea, and something to put towards the... It'd be very good for the community. Couple of things that just... Because it is a takeout restaurant, I mean, well, first of all, what kind of food are you... Is it special type of food?
It's going to be pizza, roast beef.
Okay.
And all fresh, like handmade french fries, handmade onion rings, fresh pochi from local farms. Nothing frozen.
Yeah. My mouth is watering already, so... But what are you proposing hours? What are you planning on to do as far as hours are concerned?
The building itself already is a 24/7 hour usage already, but we plan on doing a four-day week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, all.
Okay.
Monday, yeah, and Monday night also.
Thursday to Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. And I guess, well, one or a couple of other things too. Like, do you have any plan for signage as far as, you know... Obviously, you've got to get your name out there and let everybody know.
We do have a marketing plan. We haven't really gone too far with that yet. We were just really waiting for the special permit first before we keep going.
Like any illuminated signs, Patrick will probably have to come before us anyways, right? If you had any plans for illuminated signs to let everybody know where you're at. And, I mean, it is a takeout window, and it's a very keen idea, too. You've seen that popping up a lot more. But, I mean, you're also seeing pop up a lot more all these delivery options like Uber apps and FoodSquire and... Oh, Uber Eats, excuse me, FoodSquire, DoorDash. Do you have any plans for delivery?
Yeah. We do plan on doing Uber Eats.
Okay. All right. But you already have, what, three parking spots in the back?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I don't think that that's not going to be... Patrick, that shouldn't be any issue, right? Is that... No? But, yeah, I mean, that's those are my only questions in that, and I'm very excited for you, and, you know, I wish you the best of luck. I think you're going to do very well there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I, too, want to add my personal and professional comments. I want to thank citizens coming out tonight in support of Mr. Wiesa. I do echo the comments from Mr. Howie and his kindness and generosity and his willingness to help his fellow citizens throughout the city, some in less fortunate circumstances. And this partnership also shows his ability as a business owner to see in this young man the ability to start a business in the city and move forward in success. I personally know Ryan Betancourt very well. You're very energetic. You're goal-driven. You're very well-prepared coming in front of this board this evening, and I want to let you know how proud I am of where you are and having the ability to come into the Zoning Board of Appeals and speak with professionalism, speak to the board members, and answer the questions and understand what you're getting into at your young age. I believe you're 22 or 20...
Twenty-six now.
So, I just showed my age. And I, obviously, are looking worse than I feel, but I do wish you the best of luck. I'm in the corner. You should be very proud...
Thank you.
...of what you're going. I've seen you around the city, working in various restaurants over the last ten or so years. And the fact that you're making the move to become your own business owner and giving back to the city, quite frankly, is very impressive.
Thank you.
So, I want to stress that this partnership with a business leader mentoring and bringing another generation of business owners to the city of Lowell is what makes us the city of Lowell. And I think it's a great example.
Thank you.
Thought it was very important to share that, because we don't often see... We don't often see these parallels with, you know, seasoned businessmen taking his property and moving forward and helping a young guy out. And I know you must have a good relationship, and thank you for your guidance.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns from the board members at this time?
Just want to clarify, the condition is going to be work with DPD, develop a site plan for...
The outdoor seating and...
Outdoor seating and the line flow.
The line flow for the sidewalk.
Line flow for the sidewalk. So, just want to make sure. That's going to be a condition that is part of this, so if you're in agreement with that.
Okay.